Good evening and welcome to the Dearborn Public Schools regular scheduled meeting. Today is Monday, June 5th, 2023, and it's 7:04. I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Mosip. Trustee Pechikov.
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Thorpe.
Thank you.
Next, Fledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Erin McEnville, Hague Elementary Principal, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. We are very excited to have the Hague Owls representing tonight. We have third grader Jad Hashem, fourth grader Sarah Hakim, and fifth grader Lana El-Sarraj.
Sarah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Iowa.
Well done.
Jad? Good job. Thank you very much. You got this? All right. Run on. All right. Good job. Thank you. And Sarah, last but not least, great job. Thank you very much. Another round of applause.
Thank you.
Before we go to our next item, Dr. Maleko has got a statement to make.
Yes, so I'd like to call up Ms. Manar Kodama to talk about our new translation service that we offer. We have some new technology. Actually, several, about a half a year ago, Congresswoman Talib had contacted me and got us in contact with a group, and then we've researched it, so I'll let her speak to the new technology for translation.
Thank you so much. I just want to remind everyone watching us, I'm going to say it in English and then in Arabic, that today we are having the Simon Taters interpreting via Zoom, so any one of the audience would like to hear it in Arabic. And it's just for now in Arabic. We are planning to have it in different languages in the future. You just go to the YouTube channel for Dearborn Public Schools. You have the description at the bottom. Click on the link of Zoom, go to the globe icon, click on the globe icon, and choose Arabic language, and then you will be able to hear the whole board meeting in Arabic. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Madam Secretary, next item.
Superintendent's update.
So we'll start with every month we have our retirements. We want to both thank them and congratulate them on their years of service to our students and community. So we have Jamel Adora, over 34 years of service, Lisa Attard, over 23 years of service, Elham Barbat, 30 years of service, Brian Bachelor, 25 years of service, Tamara Davidson, over 28 years of service, Kelly Deere, 12 years of service, Gabriella Dobronsky, over 20 years of service, Carl Dobronsky, 36 years of service, Mary Ella Swad, 23 years of service, William Harrison, 28 years of service, Sandra Moreau, over 24 years of service, Carol Tyson, 35 years of service, Deanna Trakoff, 21 years of service, and most of all of them I've known or interacted over the years. And again, congratulations to our retirees. So I'll go down the agenda. So on non-agenda items, I have the district membership for MHSAA, our athletic conferences, and that will come to the board on the 19th for approval, as it does every year. We also have coming for approval to the board, I'm going to call up Ms. Peterson right now. It is for the K-12 virtual school, which allows us to also enroll students from out of district for virtual only. We were approved K-5, and now we are planning to put it on the agenda for potential approval next month, or excuse me, next meeting. We have two meetings this month, for the K-12. And so Ms. Peterson's here, and we think it's a good opportunity for a district. Again, it's for virtual only.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Maleko. It's been a while since I've had you up here. Yes, the virtual school would really like to be able to open up and expand a little bit. Remember, our virtual schools tech is actually remote, so students get live instruction. We do have a planned process for them to apply and for us to meet with the parents, because as you get into high school, we want to make sure we set students up for success. It does take some self-discipline and parent support to really actually be successful in the virtual environment, but we think it will help both Dearborn, our enrollment in our virtual school, which will allow us to offer more things, and students out of Dearborn who need a viable option. And I can't say enough about our staff and the work that we're doing. Graduation's tomorrow. We met with our seniors today, and that was wonderful. We are still working to continue to improve the school, to find ways to bring students in person, so they get that social aspect, as well as learning in a protective environment. They say it's where we make school our home, so we're hoping that you support.
Trustee Pechikov.
One question, and I think we've had this answer before, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding with the virtual program. A lot of times, because they're in district students, they can also do extracurricular activities at our actual, what would be their home school building. What does that look like for students who are not actually living in the district?
So they wouldn't be able to do sports or in person, but we do have virtual clubs. So this year we had 13 clubs that met virtually after school, so they would be allowed to do that. But it would be in their agreement that they understand they cannot do sports and in person.
Would they be eligible in their own home district to do anything?
That I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
They would have to ask, they'd have to petition.
They'd have to make sure that they understood the limitations.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that is part of the interview process. I mean, we want to make sure they're going to be successful and they understand all the ins and outs.
That was going to be my question too, but can you elaborate on why they won't be eligible?
I think we would have to check with MHSAA to even know if they could be, but that's something I'll defer to Mr. Sure.
The way I understand it, because it's a completely separate school district.
Correct.
School.
Well, and I don't know how they would get there. Like, if they're on with us, because they run 7:45 to 2:45, so how they would even get to Dearborn for practice when they don't live in the area could also be difficult.
But still, you're always going to get that one parent that's going to ask. We don't want to look like we're blacking, but it's a separate, different school, so they wouldn't be eligible to play at Etzel Ford or Dearborn or Fortson.
Correct, because they're not a member.
Yeah, exactly.
They don't live in our boundaries.
Yeah, let's get a little ahead of our, you know, clarification on that, so we're ready before that comes up. Yes, Trustee Watts?
Can you remind us, how many of our students participated in virtual school this year?
433. So it was slightly under 100 elementary, about 130 middle, and the rest were high school. Our secondary is two-thirds girls.
And do we know in terms of the reasons why they wanted virtual? Was it because of COVID? Was it because of more of a natural environment for them?
Yeah, so there's lots of reasons. We have some students, it's anxiety. Some students, they weren't making great choices in person, so their parents have decided that the best place to keep them safe is at home. And other students truly just like to learn in that environment and free of distractions.
And just to remind everyone, these virtual classes, I mean, they're being taught by Dearborn Public School teachers.
Correct.
So we're using our teachers for this. Do you anticipate what sort of enrollment we're going to be looking for for next year?
Well, for elementary, when we opened up last year, we had less than 10. So, and then for sixth through 12th, it will be how many we can fit in without adding, you know, additional stress to the teachers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Trustee McDonald.
One quick question. If a student wasn't particularly successful in virtual, but perhaps their parents wanted them to continue in virtual, how do we kind of say we have better options for the student?
So for our Dearborn students, we counsel them in or out if they're not successful. The last thing we want is a student to be failing.
Right.
And we have moved some students back because they just were not successful in that environment.
Okay.
For out of district, that's why we really want to meet with them, because we want to make sure that they're able, do our best to make sure that they're going to be able to be successful.
Thank you.
Because we can't send them back to a Dearborn person's school.
And I thought, Trustee McDonald, you asked a different question. So we experienced this year, I think mostly at the middle school, where students' parents says, I want to take them out of virtual school. You can't just decide overnight that's going to happen.
No, it's a year-long commitment.
Yes.
In Dearborn. And however, we did have some parents apply for a boundary line exemption for the second semester, and Mr. Mashur goes through the process of whether or not that's able to be done. But when they sign on, it's for the year, and that is understood.
And have we thought that through, how this would look like if we get somebody from out of the district?
I mean, it is for the year, right? And we would counsel them at the end of the year that maybe next year they need to make a better choice.
I mean, if they were to just leave and go back to their home school, there's nothing we can do, though. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Watts?
Just to follow up, for those students that perhaps anxiety is preventing them from going into the physical school building, are we providing them wraparound services?
Oh, we have social work.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure they were helping.
Home visits. We have done, we've probably done more home visits for virtual than I ever did when I was principal of Bryant.
I would imagine so. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure everyone else knew about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. You can come visit us more often.
So ceremonies and graduations, graduations, this is my favorite time of the year. We have something every night. We started after the Memorial Day holiday with the honors ceremonies that were great, and we will continue into graduations. As Ms. Peterson said, we have two tomorrow night for three different schools, and then we start with the traditional schools on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So we're very excited to see our students out there. I do have a statement on investigation, because I know some of this has been coming up on social media and other places, and we do have our attorney Mike Gibbons present. And so the district does not comment publicly on individual personnel matters legally. However, you can be assured that the district is always vigilant in its efforts to protect the health and safety of our students, our staff, and follow all state and federal laws. On the rare occasion that there's an allegation of inappropriate conduct by a district employee, the allegations are promptly investigated and fully addressed in accordance with all applicable laws. Depending on the nature of the allegation, the staff member may be placed on administrative leave for the safety of all, including the accused. Of course, if anyone has evidence of wrongdoing regarding a district employee, that information should be immediately provided to a district compliance officer, and I know we're going to provide that information on the screen, I believe, right now. And there's some policies that are with the compliance officers that are located. And they're all trained. All of our compliance officers are trained.
And all this information is on the website?
Yes, and it's on our website, so. Thank you.
Anything on the other?
I have a couple of things. I just want to mention that I got three others. PTA Council, we had a meeting this afternoon, President Nabeel and others, and I know Ms. Hyder's here. We had a very positive meeting on how we can work together to support our students, our staff. We have, I see we have our great teachers here. Again, let's give them a big round of applause. And the council wants to work with us to work to support, you know, with administration to support our teachers. Appreciate always meeting, as we have for many years, with union leadership, not only the teachers, but all the unions, and we value all the employees. So we'll continue to work together, both to make improvements, to support our staff, because we know we need a great staff, like the teachers here, and other staff members in order to provide high-quality education for our students. So I just wanted to mention that and thank everyone who's here today. I also have two more quick ones. I had a wonderful event last week. It was quite an operation, the Adapted PE Field Day over at Etzel Ford. It was honestly fantastic. I want to give a shout out to those who, I'll give some specific names of staff, Adam Stage, Claudio Belly, Johnny Borg, Nicole Sawetowsky, Colleen Cook, and others. We had a lot of other staff members there. We had student volunteers, and the students were so excited that we had parents, transportation was involved. It was quite an operation. It was a nice day, and a lot of it was going on before the heat came, and so it was just positive. There's a student, Will Lee, I'm going to give him a shout out, because I saw him last year at Quick Care to the Core. He wanted to be on my YouTube channel, and so we got two tapings. Mike, you remember that when we were on the tour bus. So I remembered him, him and his friends, and they were very excited. So I did two tapings for him, and we made sure we posted them up there. So it was very positive, and again, those are some of the, and I appreciate the great work that our special education staff does in the district. And the last thing I just want to mention is another positive thing, Mr. Golich, who reached out to me via Trustee D'Ambrosio, through the city. There was a children's business affair fair yesterday at the Ford Field here in Dearborn. The Amity Foundation was involved in sponsoring it, along with author Ms. Eman Sala and others. And oh my gosh, what a great thing. When you see the students and their projects and the positive, it was also nice that the temperature did come down a little from Saturday, but I got to tell you, they were so excited. The winners were excited, but I was a judge, so they recruited me as a judge. I truly enjoyed it. I plan to go every year if they run the event, and I think it was just fantastic when we see this project-based learning going on. So there's a lot of positive things going on. I appreciate any of the staff members. The Lori School in particular made sure they got a picture with me with the team, and again, thank you to the staff for providing support. They were Dearborn school students, so it was a great event. Thank you. That's all for my commentary.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Let's break the ice and introduce yourself, please. Take a breath. You're fine.
We know you're not shy.
I'm Margaret. I'm a junior at Etzel Ford.
I'm Santiago Torres. I'm also a junior at Etzel Ford.
Okay, thank you.
For the district, commendations to bus driver Andre Price, who took fourth place in the Wayne County School Bus Rodeo in April, and will go on to the state competition later this year. Forty-eight drivers from 12 districts participated in the event, and Team Dearborn took fourth place overall. Commendations to bus driver Vanis Ledford and Irvin Warren, who were selected for 2023 Wayne County Excellence in Transportation Awards. These awards are presented to individuals who exemplify excellence in providing or supporting the safe transportation of students. Commendations to adult education teacher Kathy Tade. She was recently selected by the U.S. Department of State for the prestigious English Language Teaching Fellowship, and will spend next school year teaching in Thailand and for high school. Commendations to Dearborn High students and the Health Occupation Students of America, who took top honors at the state championship this spring, and were invited to the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas in June. The parliamentary procedures team took first place and includes 10th graders Donna Shamas, Ayman Fakuri, Ali Abdelhafez, Haura Alzargani, and Bisan Alzain, and 11th grader Ahmed Al-Qadri. Club president Mohammed So also took third in prepared speaking. More than 2,500 students from across Michigan attended the competition. The club advisor is Reina Bazihajazi. Students have created a GoFundMe to help pay for the trip.
Commendations to Michael Berry Career Center senior Amina Yagmore, who was recognized last month by the Dearborn Fire Department with an outstanding civilian award. Yagmore was nearby when a car crashed in January, and she ran over when a car crashed, and provided assistance, including helping remove an unresponsive driver from his vehicle and performing light-saving CPR. Yagmore, 18, is also a Dearborn High student and earned her pharmacy technician certification at the Michael Berry Career Center. Commendations to three Etzel Ford High School students who earned multiple automotive service excellent certifications. Salman Ahmed, a senior, received six of the certifications. Junior Amir Al-Qatib received eight, and sophomore Jeremy Paddock earned all 10 automotive service excellent certifications. The class is taught by Marissa Reyno. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School's varsity softball team, which claimed the MHSAA District 15 championship on Friday. Commendations to Dearborn High track athlete Sam Roberts, who took third in the state for the 1,600-meter run with a time of 4:1730. Also, commendations to DHS student Tayshon Crosby, who tied seventh in the state for high jump with a jump of 6'3". For middle school. Commendations to school resource officer Adele Sala, who works at Stout Middle School. Officer Sala was praised for showing sensitivity to mental health concerns while maintaining a delicate balance of assessing students' risk behaviors. He is always pleasant and calm, even in challenging situations, and treats everyone with respect and dignity. For preschool, commendations to preschool para-professional Mimi Jafar, who has gone above and beyond to assist a family navigating difficult medical needs for their child. Mr. Jafar has helped translate between the parents and school officials, including the school nurse. She has also attended a recent medical visit with the family, bringing a bag full of toys and assisting with translating between the family and the doctor, and helping keep the student calm during the exam.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Next, acknowledgement of donations.
While we're waiting, I just have to say, wow, there's some really exciting things happening in Dearborn.
Good evening, everyone. A donation of $295.99 has been offered to Whitmore Bowles Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a classroom rug. A donation of $1,200 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for SEL and Learning Intervention Area. A donation of $2,110 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for BPA registration fee for nationals. A donation of $120 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for flexible seating. A donation of $1,675 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for robotics lock-in toolboxes. A donation of $345.71 has been offered to Whitmore Bowles again by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a classroom rug. A donation of wooden easel has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Peggy and Joe Bennett to be used by the students in the advanced drawing and painting classes. A donation of $150 has been offered to Nowlin Elementary School by the Gardening Club of Dearborn to be used for plants, for plants for the school garden. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Khalid Abdullah and Ubaid Maury to be used for the PBIS student incentives and awards. A donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Judy Beal to be used towards the Salina Student Celebration through communities and schools. A donation of $250 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Good Fellows to be used towards the Salina Student Celebration through CIS again, communities and schools. A donation of $200 has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Rawad Zahiter to be used for end-of-the-year student awards. A donation of $300 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Aida Al-Sagir to be used towards Honors Night. We really thank all the donors for their donations this month. Thank you.
I just wanted to add an acknowledgement of the very generous small businesses we have in Dearborn. There was an issue that came up at Etzel Ford High School. The senior class COVID-related didn't raise enough money for them to go to Cedar Point, but parents, led by Stephanie Butler, led the charge and were able to raise. I thought it was only a couple thousand dollars, but it was closer to $10,000, if I remember, what I understand. But yeah, thank you very much to Stephanie, the parents, and the small businesses we have in Dearborn. I believe hundreds of students, seniors, went to Cedar Point. That money was used for tickets, food, and transportation. So we appreciate all that. Next item, please, Madam Secretary.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Executive session, President Contract/Closed, May 15th, 2023, Board Report 22-140. Study session, May 15th, 2023, Board Report 22-141. And Policy Committee meeting, May 22nd, 2023, Board Report 22-142. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Trustee D'Ambrosio, supported by Trustee Pechikov. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes? Okay, unless I hear any objections, we will attach a unanimous roll call in affirmative. Next item, please.
Special reports, implementing the student code of conduct. Mrs. Fatma Baraj, Mr. Mark Rommel, Ms. Haye Al-Qadri, and Ms. Shannon Peterson.
And this is part of a board request, so, go ahead. And the principals can come up too. Thank you to the principals for coming.
Good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Maleko said, this was a board request, and we know with student discipline and responding to misbehaviors, the overarching goal is, of course, teaching students the right behaviors. We do implement different strategies in Dearborn Public Schools, and we have our wonderful principals representing their levels to go over what we do in schools and also how do we respond in terms of accountability. Thank you so much. We have Mr. David Higgins and Ms. Shannon Peterson representing elementary, Mr. Mark Rommel representing middle school, and Ms. Hiyam Al-Qadri representing high school. Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening, trustee. Dr. Maleko?
Evening.
So, and for elementary, really, it's all about teaching behaviors. And when we spoke to our colleagues, we were all pretty similar in our expectations of being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. Understanding that we have to teach students what that looks like in school, especially returning after the shutdowns. Students, you know, how you get along with a few people at home is very different than how you get along with 200-plus, sometimes 500, students in a school.
600.
600. Each misbehavior really is an opportunity to talk to the student about what happened before, what choice they made, understanding that they did make a choice, and then what result they got, and was that appropriate or safe or unsafe, respectful or disrespectful, and how to make a better choice so you don't hurt other people's feelings or hurt other people. And really, in the beginning of the year and throughout the year, it's important to not only build community, but to teach what you expect, and they're children. So I had to put an elementary hat on after spending so much time in secondary, and every once in a while I have to call somebody to say, hey, this is what I'm thinking. I don't, I want to make sure I'm being responsive to the students while also being consistent. Students will truly understand, if you teach them what you expect, if they know you believe in them, and if you are consistent, and they can recover, they understand.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the whole part that Shannon just mentioned about the building the community and building relationships. That's critical, and that's the beginning of every year. It should be in whatever level you're at, but particularly with us. And, you know, before we can get to essential state standards and all, we must build those relationships, not only within our classrooms, but with our families throughout the community. So that's really critical. So some of the things that are bullet pointed on here are really some of the things that we do, but if you don't take that first step in building those relationships and building that community, none of these will really work. So it's not mentioned in here, but I want to say that one of the common themes that you find through almost all schools is a real message of kindness. I know it sounds somewhat cliche, but it is really what you do see in most schools, and that's done in a variety of ways, whether it's a, like at William Ford, we do a morning message of kindness. message of kindness every day that our students read, but you'll see kindness signage throughout the buildings, whether that's presentations and things by outside or within the buildings. They do those. So that's something that's pretty common everywhere. But some of the other specific things that you might find in elementary schools to help us really build that trust and the relationships in the community is social emotional learning that's either taught by social workers, but it's also taught by our classroom teachers. And those includes your feelings and how you, as Shannon mentioned, how those actions impact others and how you take responsibility for some of those things. So also, some of the ways that we do that is through staff development that's provided through a variety of ways throughout the district or by our own internal people within the building or sharing from building to building to help us, you know, recognize what are some of the strategies that we can use and implement within the classrooms, recognizing triggers that may lead early on that may lead to misbehaviors and such. Another one is restorative circles, but I would say that's kind of after the fact. But prior to that is the morning circle, also is another way to get a real pulse of where the child is first thing in the morning, as well as looking maybe back about things that may have happened in the past. And it could be anywhere from five minutes to fifteen minutes, depending on what happens. And that's a great way to start the day, following your morning announcements and before you really get into it. And you can probably, you know, some of those things that might happen through the day, you can probably avoid many of those just by that morning circle and kind of coming together. Some of the other things that might be done are assemblies. Invited guests are great, but some of my experiences have been are your student-created and driven kind of assemblies that take place within your own building are the ones that are the most powerful. You give a group, if we did it this year, you give a group of fourth graders or fifth graders, hey, I want you to do some kind of act on kindness, and you will be blown away by what they'll do. They're invested in it. They see their, you know, those in the audience see their classmates who have created it, and that's probably the more powerful way to do it. And finally, it's at the bottom for a purpose. If we get to a point, because it happens, we're humans, and sometimes we do make a bad choice, we are, you know, out-of-school suspension is, I'm not a big fan of it at an elementary level. I mean, we do follow student code of conduct, and if something has been violated and it's a serious nature, we're going to take care of that. But for the most part, you know, in-school suspensions gives us, in-school suspension gives us the opportunity to work with that child, to work with the family, whether that's through us and admin or social workers and such to really kind of dig deeper as to where that may have come from. So those, some of the things.
So here would be an example of something that is taught in a social emotional lesson at long, and we have our social workers go in weekly to the classrooms, and this was something that we started in the summer schools that we provided previously, and the teachers really enjoyed. They learn, the students learn. But just being able to talk to a student, like, it is okay to be sick or sad or angry, but how do we deal with those emotions? That's something that's taught. We also have check-ins with the students, including virtually. The students have a form that they fill out. It's different for each level, but then I would get a phone call or the social worker would get a phone call if we have to check in with a student that's in the virtual land. So really is speaking to the students and teaching them, you know, and being able to communicate, David, I felt sad when you did this. I need you not to do that to me again. Being able to communicate our feelings in a respectful way and not react is really what we work to teach the students.
Good evening, trustees. Dr. Malenko. The foundation that the elementary school put before you is very similar to where we start. It's all about teaching expectations and reteaching expectations and then coming back from breaks and reteaching expectations. But at times, still misbehaviors will come up, and when it comes to the responsibility side of it, we step it up a little bit more when it comes to the secondary level, middle school level. When these behaviors come to fruition, unfortunately, there are three-pronged approach really to responding. First, it's addressing the behavior, and next is making sure that it's an educational experience, a learning experience. I mean, we are the school. We're here to learn. We're training behaviors and retraining behaviors. And finally, restoring, fixing the problem and giving the kids the tools to do that and restore that within the community at large, the school community. So really, when it comes to it, we're really looking to behavior modification. It's not so much a very scripted approach, and every student is different depending on the situation. As you can see, there's quite a few approaches that we have listed, and there's the more traditional, I guess you'd say, consequences that we're familiar with, more of like suspensions, in-school suspensions, detentions, those types of things, but also addressing the behaviors in such a way where students get something out of it as a learning experience. And that might be some type of assignment to help restore the behavior or model the behavior that we're looking for. That might be working with a certain peer, working with someone that speaks to you, whether it's a trusted adult or somebody else within the school community. But there are lots of different options that we have, and it doesn't just end at consequences. That's the starting point. There, I mean, there is a code of conduct in place, and actions do have consequences, and we all realize that. However, we're also in the business of retraining behaviors and helping students become productive citizens from not only their high school careers, but also in lives.
Okay, it looks like they covered a lot of what we do in the high school. So we teach and reteach expectations, and you can see some of those things up. But I'm going to go on to some specific things. So because at the high school, each teacher might have one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty students, what we do the first two weeks, because we really want students to feel like they're at home, that we're family. So we spend a first week eighty percent of the time having teachers build relationship with the kids. We provide teachers with activities, and we do activities by hour, by subject. So the student, as he goes through the day, six hours of the day, he's seeing different ideas in terms of our expectations and activities where they're building relationships with their students. And then the second week, we spend fifty percent of our time on that community building. And again, we provide the teachers with all the information they need, and then we're back. So at the beginning of the semester, we do assemblies in addition to this. Beginning of first and second semester, we do video announcements when we hear from kids, hey, this is going on. Maybe we should do an announcement. So we do announcements to them. We do weekly emails to keep them updated on what's happening and reminding them about caring for each other, building those relationships. All right. So a lot of, so let's say things aren't working out. So the teacher does a tremendous job of trying to work with the student. Maybe he needs to change the seat. You know, maybe she calls the parent and says, oh, he's doing great. You know what I mean? Let the kid know that she wants him to do better, and by giving the parents positive things and him hearing about it, it works. If that doesn't work, we have the parent layers, counselors, social responsibility techs. We have different levels to meet with them, meet with the parents, set up meeting with teachers and parents. We're not talking about suspending or anything. It's just about trying to get the student to do all the right things. So there's almost five different levels before it actually goes to an administrator. All right, once we get to the administrator, the expectation with the administrator is that we're not, we're talking about the behavior, trying to figure out what caused it, but then we also lead into what is he doing in school academically? To me, that's like one of the most important things, letting that student know that we care about their success in getting a high school diploma and having a career path when they leave with us, so that the administrators have the tools, that the counselors have to be able to know what it is that the student is interested in. They have that conversation. So these conversations, by the way, allow students to know they have people to go to. You know, having mentors is, you know, we have some, but we'd like every student to have a mentor. So at least with us talking to them, they feel comfortable with us, and we say open door policy, they come and visit us when they need something. So it's all about building the relationship as everyone else said. And we try to avoid, we do community service. We feel that's important. If we have to issue anything, a detention, we have a social responsibility room where they can reflect on what they do, and then the out-of-school suspension when it's absolutely necessary.
Trustee Pachikoff?
Yeah, I was the one who asked for this report, and I asked for it because I had a parent come to me probably in the winter. She had an elementary student that had an out-of-school suspension, and she was very concerned. I'm happy to hear that that's a very rare occurrence, and it's probably, I understood what the misconduct was. But the question then came, you know, about out-of-school suspensions and how often do they occur, because they really take away from the student's ability to learn anything. They're usually home not, not only are they probably not doing the assignments well or being well-supervised necessarily, but they also aren't getting a lesson from being in the school setting and having the examples necessary and the conversations necessary to help them change their behavior, if necessary. So I'm happy to hear that that is something, and I would, we do keep track of out-of-school suspension numbers, correct? I would like to have.
We're required to, yeah.
Yeah, have those numbers in board briefs at one point. It's not anything necessary now. My question then would be, we know that there's a lot of opportunities, and it really is incumbent upon this circle to engage with, including the family and besides what's happening in the school setting. And I wanted to see how it looked differently at each level as the student grew and developed, because one would hope you would see some improvement over time. Can anybody anecdotally say that, you know, that restorative circles, and I know that, and nobody wants to see anything punitive as much as we want a teaching lesson, but what's the best method to see that a student in elementary school who might have difficulties as they go through their school cycle, do we see improvement with certain specific means better than with others? Because I've also heard concerns with the restorative practices, and I'm not bashing it at all, but that some students are very uncomfortable with it, and it doesn't really work well with them, having that kind of awkward conversation, either from the person who had, was victimized and/or the student who was having difficulty maintaining their behavior, and it isn't always that successful. So I just was curious if anybody anecdotally has seen a student progress through elementary, middle, and high school with challenges, that something has really worked well for you.
I can just say, because I had elementary, middle school, and then they all fed into my high school, certain students that I remember in elementary that were having difficulty, honestly, and we were doing things with them to improve it, the change was, the change happened. Does it happen with all those elementary students? No, but it can happen, but you really got to work with those kids at all levels, all levels.
So it's a persistence?
A persistence.
Well, that and I also think communication between the levels. So for my fifth graders last year, I let Mark know who needed mentors right from the get-go, so that they were supported the minute they got there. And so our communication, it's not just communication with the parents, but us with each other to make sure that we put safeguards in place for our students, really helps.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say it's not ever a one approach works best. It's really trying to find out what each student's currency is. In the end, how do you get to them? How do you get to their heart? And the relationship is the tried and true way. The trick is who can get that relationship with them the best. And sometimes it is at a certain level. Sometimes it's like, I've heard it, I've heard it, I've heard it, and I finally heard it from somebody new. But in other situations, things just finally click one day. And when, and speaking with restorative, I've heard the same thing. I know all of us don't ever want to force a restorative anything, but we want to strongly suggest it to our students, and if the face-to-face part of it doesn't work, we try to find other options, whether it's writing letters to each other, meeting with the people individually and kind of in between saying this person wants to express that. But if anything, at the very least, it kind of breaks the tension, because it's always awkward that first time when the two parties are back together in the same area that they have to share, and if anything, it makes that transition a lot smoother for them. So we really, really encourage it, but in the end, it's impossible to force it, I think, effectively.
I just want to add one thing. So every student has a story. So part of us building that relationship is getting to know what that story is, because what they're dealing with, maybe with friends at school, things at home, or things they've experienced in their life, we need to know that story. So that's what I meant about the conversations we have with students, is really finding out their real story, why the behavior happened, and how we can support them.
I want to mention one thing, too. That's why I kind of mentioned at the beginning, the difference with restorative circles versus like more proactive morning circle time, because I think, you know, we talked about the awkwardness about that, and I think if you built that relationship, you built that trust within the morning, circled that a little bit different. Now, if you were just to have someone come to my office or this management's office the first time and you're going to put them into a restorative circle, yeah, you're right. That's going to be awkward. But if, that's what I talk about, the building of relationships, even like Ham was talking about in the high school. If you built that trust and relationship with that child as well as with that family, those conversations aren't as difficult as you might think, so.
And just one real quick add-on. A lot of times, we hear, especially at the elementary level, a lot of the issues occur while on the playground, not in the classroom. Our lunchroom moms, our noon hour supervisors, technically, how are they involved in any kind of maybe additional training or what, how do they handle it? Because I know that that's where we hear about a lot of the issues becoming a problem in the first place and then maybe carried over.
So I'll be honest, I'm in the lunchroom for every lunch, and I get out to the playground. I do train my noon hours as best I can, but a lot of times, it's what happened and how do we set up the situation where it can't happen again? So where Long is, I'm by a pretty busy, like, it's not a busy street, but it is, it's next to a park, and there are times where we don't play football with more than four people, because if we add more than four people, tensions get high and they can't handle it. So it's problem-solving those things as well and finding out what's safe to do with the number of students we have out there, especially lunch recess, and just how to handle, and it's trial and error and what works and doesn't work. But we do work with our noon hours to supervise, but I'm always out there.
So I'm assuming then, Dr. Malenko, that that's something handled at the building level, then with the noon hour supervisors and what kind of specific instructions they're given?
Yeah, because, I mean, every building is a little different. The size, like right here, the size is different. You know, I was a principal at the vault, and in Salina, well, I had different makeup of noon hours and process for lunch and where they line up and where they go. So it is kind of up to the building administration to kind of provide that system for the noon hours with the students.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Thank you. So I think most of us know that the first three weeks of any school year is exciting and scary and whatnot, but I know that that's where we establish those relationships. So I heard that in the high school, the first week, we do eighty percent, the second, we do fifty percent. Do we do that at the elementary school level? Because what I'm hearing is that with the SEL, let me take it back. We came out of COVID. We have learning loss, but we're seeing that our, I'm hearing that our students are struggling, that they're struggling to play catch-up academically while trying to figure out the trauma that they have gone through. And what we're seeing is that perhaps the school year, the first three weeks, with high school, it sounds like we're doing it, but are we looking forward, and I guess this is just a hypothetical, going forward, are we able to establish that the first three weeks, we really just focus in on those relationships? Because I do agree, it's those relationships that we have with our students that get them to open up or with mom and dad to say, what is going on with the student, as opposed to why is this student exhibiting this behavior? It's what's happening to the student that they're causing this behavior to happen, right? So we're changing that sort of narrative question. So that's number one. And I think number two is, I'm sorry, go ahead and.
And I'll let David jump in if I miss something. So every teacher does their community building in their classroom, and that also includes teaching routines and what to expect and how to do things. And for student, for a lot of children, they just need to know how things work, and every year is a different classroom. Now, luckily, in elementary, for the most part, they're not switching to six different teachers during the day, so there's a lot of community building and teaching of routines and transitions. And those conversations never stop. Now, I do go into every classroom to talk about expectations. Middle school, high high school, I would do it in an assembly, but in elementary, I choose to go into every classroom. I think it's a little more intimate with the kids, and they get to ask you lots of questions, and it's just more fun. I love elementary. But it's really about teaching in it. It now, those building that community never stops. It just never stops. They're they're with those kids most of the day, all day, and they just continue to build those.
Yeah, I would I would agree. That's that's not three weeks, and and we have some really incredibly creative and talented teachers. And that community building is done while you're teaching those standards. So that's like Shannon says, that's happening throughout the year, because in elementary, we have a three-day weekend, and we're we're reteaching some of the the routines and such, you know? So that happens, it's ongoing.
So then, so then follow up with, I think, with Ms. Peterson, what you were saying about the virtual schools, that we have some students that just because anxiety is just too much. So is there something, or do we have a correlation or any data that shows that those students who switch from in-person to virtual, are they doing it because of the anxiety of school, because of the lack of connections and relationships that they're having? Is it because that maybe perhaps they're being bullied? Is it because in the hallways, we know that sometimes it's those tiny little cuts that nobody sees, but it starts to accumulate over time? And I know that this is a, this is a lot, right?
I don't know that I have the answers to all of those. I can tell you that, like, we have a high school senior graduating tomorrow, and it was, actually, two of them, and it was completely because of anxiety, and they're working through that, because they do have to get out into the real world now. But, I mean, that would be something good for us to research. The students that stay in virtual, really, they like learning that way. Some, the parents that have chosen it because they weren't making great decisions, it's not out, more often, that's not as successful as the student that really likes learning in that in that environment.
And thank you, I appreciate. I mean, I think these are really good conversations, I think, just coming out of COVID to kind of get a pulse as to where our students are.
When I was in, when the students were here in the building for testing, and they came to me and they taught, told me how much they liked the virtual school and to keep the virtual school and don't, you know, we were not planning to get rid of it, but they wanted to make sure that I knew that they wanted to keep that school going.
And I did not tell them to say that.
They came up to me on their own.
I'll just add one thing real quickly. Talking about anecdotal evidence, the one thing that I keep thinking is that we have seen fewer and fewer hearings lately, so something is going on that is having a positive impact on our students and making a difference. And I remember the first time I heard about this type of learning was many years ago at a conference, and it just made so much sense, because we teach our kids how to read, we teach our kids math. Well, when they would have behavioral issues, we would punish them. And that is just, you know, it never made sense. So to know that that's not what's being done, that our teachers, our our students are learning how, what's expected of them and in the appropriate way to behave. And I think you are making quite an impact. Like I said, we haven't had, there was a few years back, we were having just.
Monthly?
Tons of hearings.
Okay, knock on.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. So, and thank you, because I do believe what you're doing and what the teachers are doing and what's happening in the buildings is making an impact, a positive impact on our students. Good work.
Mr. Higgins mentioned consistency, and I know what happens within a building, not the elementary level, but the seven middle schools and our high schools. This is a different discussion. I'd love to see, when it comes to interventions and consequences, consistency among the district. Sometimes we're lacking there, because I'll see a report, and I'm like, what? So that's a whole different discussion. I'll talk to Dr. Malenko, maybe. But thank you very much, it was a great report. I appreciate it.
Just one more real quick comment, too. I like the fact that you're also emphasizing positive behavior. I think that is hugely important, even when it's not coming back from something negative. If you just see somebody doing something positive, give them a pat on the back, because that just sends such a message to others, and it sends a message to that student. I think that's always important. And I saw something in your presentation that said that that was happening, so.
Okay, but that's a fine line. Like, I always tell the kids, like, I have, like, we'll see you doing it. You're not going to get a character slip to go in the lottery every time you.
No, not every time.
Because they'll come up, Ms. Peterson, I cleaned up somebody's mess. So it's, they have to learn that, too, right?
Absolutely. But especially with a student that, you know, might need some encouragement.
And I will say that the PBIS framework in general helps us at the secondary level have a very consistent set of expectations and also, you know, positive behavior incentives across all grade levels, because the rules in one elementary school classroom is a lot easier to get associated with than six in a school day. So I think that really helps us at both high school and middle school.
Thank you very much.